Okay, thanks to go ahead and call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance, suffer the dogs, they don't have to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please. Here.
Boyer, here. Gilligan, here. South, here. Taylor, Yelena, here. Olson.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna begin this evening with recognition of business partnerships with the Lutheran Church Charities K-9 Comfort Dog Ministry.
Good evening. So we're thrilled to continue to recognize our business partners. To complete our mission and vision here in District 88, we need the support of the community and the community agencies and our business partners. And so we are very blessed tonight to be able to recognize one very special business partner. So if Dona and Barb and Comfort Dogs Emma and Hannah can come up to the table here, say a few things and then you'll have an opportunity to address the board. At District 88, the safety, health, and well-being of our students and staff is our number one priority. Sure, yeah, right there at the table's good. We know building relationships precedes learning, and we continue to focus on connecting with all students. For students to achieve academically, we must first meet their needs socially, emotionally, and meet the needs of their mental health. So the Lutheran Church Charities K-9 Comfort Dog Ministry is a prime example of an organization working with us to achieve these goals. We're proud to honor the ministry as a business partner and thank them for their efforts. LCC K-9 Comfort Dog Ministry is a national human care ministry embracing the unique calming nature and skills of purebred golden retrievers, who are trained to interact with people of all ages and circumstances in need. The dogs visit Addison Trail, Willowbrook, and the District 88 Transition Program once a month to help support students and staff. By encouraging physical touch and verbal and nonverbal connection, the service provided by LCC K-9 Comfort Dog Ministry is a tremendous tool and asset to assist students and staff who might be struggling. For more information on this incredible program, we have it on our website, so you can take a look at our business partners and get a link there to have more information. And again, we just really want to thank you for our incredible partnership. I know that as soon as when the dogs come on campus, it's like, you know, it turns the place upside down. It's just so exciting for the students, and it's really provided incredible support and just helping to have an environment of comfort and care for our students and for our staff. So thank you so much for being able to partner with us.
Thank you so much for this honor.
Yeah, and if you speak into the microphone there.
Sure. Push the button. Okay, we want to thank you for honoring us. Some of our best visits are to schools and to just see the joy that it brings to the students. But we have really concentrated a lot in the last few years on also the staff, because we know all of the staff and the teachers are under a lot of pressure right now, too. So we welcome those opportunities to have staff times and maybe join a staff meeting. We are in 27 states now, and so we're doing a lot of visits, not only to schools, but we're in courtrooms for child advocacy. We're doing, of course, unfortunately, a lot of disaster response in suicides and, you know, those types of events, which unfortunately is getting younger and younger. So we appreciate that you recognize us to come in and be in your schools and to bring that little interaction of hopefully some joy and smiles. So thank you.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the board, we have this plaque clearing you as one of our business partners.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Emma, and we also have something for you.
Oh.
You have to ask permission before you can have some, okay?
Yes. Peanut butter is one of their favorites. Here, let's come over here, Emma, and then maybe we can get one more picture from here.
Sure.
Sure.
Hold the plaque there.
That's great. Very nice.
You're welcome to come to any meeting you want to.
Yes, we never charge folks we serve, and you can go on our website and request.
Absolutely.
This is one of those times where Maggie has been nominated throughout the school year and been waiting for the correct month to make sure that we could fully introduce her to the board, which she is no stranger, but also to honor her and her accomplishments thus far throughout high school, because we still have a few months together, which we're incredibly excited for. But I'm gonna start with just some of the compliments from the staff. And the first is Mr. Jan Boebek, music department head, says, "Maggie is a standout student in the music department. A gifted violinist and vocalist, Maggie's exceptional talent is matched only by her maturity, kindness, and thoughtfulness. Her dedication to her craft and her genuine care for those around her make her truly deserving of this recognition. Big congratulations to Maggie on this well-earned achievement. It couldn't have gone to a better person." Delilah Ramirez, your cross-country coach, adds, "Huge congratulations, Maggie. It's a very well-deserved honor. Thank you for always being such a light of knowledge, positivity, and an overall essential individual in everything you are part of, from the classroom to every team and club you partake in. I look forward to hearing about all the major things that await you in the future. You are a true Willowbrook warrior through and through." In addition, Mr. Flegel, English teacher from last year, says, "Maggie was a standout as a junior in AP English Language and Composition. She was always kind and conscientious with peers, including with some who might have needed encouragement, and she set an example for engaged thoughtful analysis of everything we read in class." It continues with Mr. Martinez, world language teacher and also speech team coach, who says, "Maggie is one of the most dedicated and hardworking students I've had the pleasure of coaching during my first few years as a coach for the Willowbrook High School Speech Team. Her commitment to excellence both in individual performances and in supporting teammates has been a driving force behind the team's success. Congratulations, Maggie. You are most deserving of this honor. We're all very proud of your contributions to the team and look forward to a strong finish to the season." And finally, head speech team coach and English teacher, Mr. Blair, says, "I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of working with Maggie Brennan since her freshman year on the speech team. She is bright, mature, focused, driven, and dedicated to her craft as a speaker and performer. What makes this year even more special is that I have the honor of working with Maggie in AP English Literature. Her writing, creativity, and participation in class are always sought after. She really is a stellar example of the class of 2025, and I'll be proud to see her accomplishments after Willowbrook." Now, she had a lot of compliments from her speech teamwork, but that's just scratching the surface of what Maggie does at Willowbrook High School. But when she will have completed her high school career, she'll have successfully completed 14 advanced placement courses. She's an AP Scholar with Distinction, an Illinois State Scholar, and she's earned distinct honor roll status each semester of her high school career. She is the president of our National Honor Society. She's also been inducted to TRIM, the Music Honor Society, the National English Honor Society, math, civitis, science, and world language honor societies. She's also been recognized with the Outstanding Freshman Award and the Human Relations Award, as well as the College Board National Hispanic Recognition Award, and she has earned the Seal of Bialiteracy. Beyond the classroom, you can hear Maggie giving our daily announcements. She does that on a regular basis, so she is often in our office. She has also been the emcee for the past two years of the senior recognition ceremony. We're not gonna let you do it this year, because you're gonna be honored this year, okay? So you're gonna be seated and being honored multiple times. She's also a celebrated member of our orchestra enquirer, as was mentioned by Mr. Boebek, earning both IHSA and ILMA honors. She's co-captain of the speech team, which we mentioned. She is just this past weekend a two-time tournament champion in Matia Valley this weekend, where the team placed seventh overall, but she was champion in two different events. So congratulations and looking forward, obviously, to regionals and sectionals coming up here very soon. She's also been a cast and a crew member for theater productions throughout her high school career, serving currently as the assistant stage manager for our upcoming winter play. She's also student ambassador, so she helps transfer students transition to Willowbrook High School. She's a new beginnings leader, helping our ninth-grade students do the same. She's also a member of the principal student leadership team, the superintendent student advisory team. She's a youth equity steward. She's also an active member of, as you heard, cross-country. She's participated in softball and track during her high school career. In her free time, she volunteers with her church, and she's a cashier at Ace Hardware. I think there's seven of you. I used to say like there's a clone, but like there's seven of you to be able to do all the things you've done. But Maggie, it has truly been an absolute privilege and honor to see you throughout your high school career and have so many different interactions with you, but also to be able to recognize you today. Beyond Willowbrook High School, she plans to continue her education in nursing. University of Iowa is her first, and I will just say only choice, because they'll be silly not to grab you up right away. But congratulations on behalf of all of Willowbrook High School, all the staff who have the privilege of working with you and your classmates on being recognized as this month's recipient of 88's Best.
Maggie, at this time, the floor is yours. Well, I thank you so much. That was, I mean, great to hear, you know. It means a lot to hear, you know, you make an impact in some way, because that's all that I'm really trying to do is make someone else's life better. Yeah, I just have loved my time at Willowbrook. It's gonna be really hard for me to leave. You know, there's so many options and opportunities that we get in this district, so I've tried to take advantage of most of them as I can, and it's really made my life better for it, so I appreciate everything. And I can not only thank my teachers and all the incredible staff that has, you know, helped me to this point. There's not seven of me, so it takes a lot of support to be able to really handle all of that, and a big part of that is also my family. They do a lot for me. They're just kinda there, and once again, that support means a lot, and it makes it possible to not be a chicken with its head cut off and running around and really get something productive done. So thank you is really all I can say. I wish there was more words, but unfortunately, there's not, so thank you.
So before the meeting, the board had an opportunity to meet with you and ask you some questions, so now's our chance to ask some questions. Can you share which teachers had the most influence or support for you and how that has helped you?
There's been a lot of people who have helped me along the way, so I'm gonna try to make a choice here. I have three. Mrs. Phillips has really helped me kind of stay, find that passion for science, which is part of the reason why I'm going towards the medical field with nursing. So I really appreciate all that she's done for me. I did a lot my sophomore year, and she really, I actually had her for both chemistry and biology at that time. So she was really helpful in just kind of being a support there. Mr. Blair, who's my speech coach, and then also now is my AP teacher, has also been an incredible source of support, and also it takes sometimes a lot of confidence to be on speech team and kind of speaking in a setting. So he's really helped me along the way and just, once again, a source of support. And then finally, my coachware, who coached, who coaches cross-country. Cross-country was nothing, was something I never expected to do my freshman year, and it's a very challenging sport. Believe you, believe them when they tell you that long distance is hard, and he's really helped me kind of push myself and be able to be competitive and complete those difficult and really difficult tasks.
Thank you. And I'll open up to the board.
Congratulations, Maggie. I wanted to know what advice you would give to an incoming freshman to help them to be as successful as you've been during your time here?
I would say take risks, push yourself outside of that comfort zone. You never know what's gonna come next. You shouldn't try to predict what's gonna come next or what you're gonna try to do, so really take chance of all those opportunities that we have. We really have so many. You hear a lot of people say like, "Oh, I wish I did so much in high school." You get such a great opportunity right between the responsibilities of college and kind of those responsibilities of adulthood that we're kind of getting without, you know, the same dangers of making the wrong decision. So it's a great time to really have fun and explore who you are and what you can do and what you enjoy before you kind of become an adult. So, yeah, just take risks and really put yourself out there.
Thank you. Congratulations again on behalf of the board. We're very excited for you and looking forward to hearing, well, we know you'll be back, because there'll be other recognitions and things like that, but we are very excited about everything you've done and your future and the things that you will continue to do. So thank you. And now Addison Trail.
Good evening. Addison Trail is honored to recognize Santino Dill is this month's recipient of 88's Best. It's really hard to describe what Santino does to Addison or does for Addison Trail, not only on an athletic field or court, inside the classroom, extracurricularly, but also who he is as a person, but I believe his teachers say it best. So I'm gonna start with some comments from staff. Ms. Robles, World Language Department Chair, expressed how she had the pleasure of teaching Santino during his freshman year. Even as a young student, he was incredibly hardworking and dedicated to doing his very best. He was a leader within the class, participating consistently and positively. I enjoyed having him in class and have enjoyed watching him continue to be a stellar student here at Addison Trail. Katie Nzinga, English 9 honors and public speaking communication teacher, stated, "I had Santino as an eager and attentive freshman in English 9 honors, and then again as a junior in public speaking and communication. Santino has an energy about him and a passion for success and helping others. He puts forth his best effort, whether it is writing a lengthy research paper, preparing for and giving a speech, or participating in class, or helping a classmate to understand the material. He is a contagious outgoing personality and a kind heart." Coach Beltrano wrote, "Santino is the epitome of what it is to be a student athlete in Blazer. He is always willing to go over and above, and as an alum, he represents what every Addison Trail student athlete and club member should strive to be. I've known Santino since he was in eighth grade, and since then, he has continued to grow with his love for Addison Trail. I wish we could have more Santinos at Addison Trail." Ms. McSweeney, who is our student council sponsor, theater sponsor, says that she has never had the pleasure of having Santino in her class, but as a member of student council and a leader of the Big Three, NHS Key Club and Student Council, the newest member of theater, he clearly exhibits everything that represents D-88's Best. Recently, in our musical, he had stepped up, attended every rehearsal, fully committed to whatever we threw at him, and has been an excellent role model. Ms. Sutton and Ms. Trapani and Ms. Haney, club sponsors, all wrote together, "We have had the pleasure of working with Santino through both Letterman's Club and Blazer ambassadors. In both clubs, Santino is a vital part of making things happen. He is creative and determined to bring out the best in events. Santino was a major force in starting class competitions and helped with the creation of the trophy and case. We have loved and are grateful to have had Santino for the past two years, and will miss him after graduation." Mr. Cole, I'm only halfway through. "Mr. Cole shared, "Once you meet Santino, it is clear that his mom is a teacher. He's organized, motivated, and focused on the future with an understanding that there is life after Addison Trail. But more than the son of a teacher, Santino is kind, dedicated, and funny. Obviously, he has been involved. He is winning the award for involvement. However, his involvement has not always been just self-serving. His involvement has helped his fellow classmates and led to a positive change for the students at Addison Trail. He will leave Addison Trail a better place for students, even if his leg is worse." He broke his leg, so. Mr. Shader, Department Chair for Physical Education and also works with Santino hand-in-hand, "Santino is a great student and an even better human. He cares about people and doing right by all. He is one of the hardest-working presidents I've had as a National Honor Society and couldn't think of a better recipient to this award. I am proud of you and all you have accomplished over the years." Ms. Clark, English teacher and AP language teacher, shared, "What an incredible kid. Santino is the kind of kid you want to lead others. He is generous and respectful and always dedicated to whatever he signs up for. Not only was Santino a stellar student in my English class for two years, but I also had the chance to see him at multiple after-school activities that were run by clubs that he was actively involved with. At both breakfast with Santa and trunk-or-treat, Santino would run around, play with all the different students or staff students that were there. He introduced himself to her kids and made them feel comfortable at all the events that they were at. Santino always shows gratitude towards his teachers and sponsors, and as a senior, he still checks in every so often. Santino cares about our school, and he takes advantage of all the opportunities AT has to offer." And finally, Ms. Eileen Sullivan, honors biology teacher, said, "Santino is one of the kindest and most humble students that I have taught. During his first year of high school, it was evident that Santino was a leader. Santino was also mature for his age, which was evident in his positive attitude and helpful demeanor. Where he mainly stood out to me, though, was in his humble character when it came to his talents, both in and out of the classroom. It comes as no surprise to me that Santino is receiving this honor, given his high academic abilities and his full-hearted participation in extracurricular activities." I feel like that was the best way to kind of sum up all the different comments, just the full-hearted participation, whether, again, it was inside of athletics, extracurriculars, what you do for students, anywhere. At the time that Santino will graduate, in a few months, he will have completed nine advanced placement courses. He has opted into the honors option every opportunity that he's had, completing nine honors courses. As you heard, he's been involved in a couple of things at Addison Trail: baseball, where he has served as a captain back in the day; basketball, football, where he served as captain; student council, spoiler alert, he did dress up as Santa as well, so fully committed to the students; National Honor Society, where he does serve as our school's NHS president; he is an AT ambassador, a member of our Letterman's Club; he will be featured in our upcoming theater play coming up February; and then he serves as a member of our principal advisory committee outside of school. He somehow finds time to coach a basketball team, just again, giving back to the community. Santino has been recognized as an Illinois State Scholar, a member of the distinct honor roll at every semester he's been at Addison Trail, and academic all-conference. He does plan to major in finance with a minor in marketing, hoping to hear back from one more school this week, but looking at opportunities at Purdue, Kentucky, Missouri, and Indiana. Santino, I don't think there's any other way to say it, but thank you. Thank you for what you've done at Addison Trail during the time that we've had you. The impact that you've had and that you'll continue to make over the next few months will live on for quite a while. So congratulations on being this month's recipient of 88's Best.
Santino, at this time, the floor is yours. And just push the button.
Thank you all. First, I want to start off by thanking Mr. Andrews. I've seen you so much throughout the school year, and it has been honestly amazing to connect with you and be so close as I am with this entire school. I do truly wish I was as good a speaker as her, but I do have something prepared on this paper to read out, so that'll be what I was starting with. I'd just like to say how honored I am to be up here in front of you all to receive this honor. It's been one of those things that I've always been hoping to get, but I never really know when I could have, but now luckily is the time. Just life in high school, it can be tough balancing sports, extracurriculars, school in general, but honestly, I wouldn't have it any other way. The more stressful it is, at least I know I'm getting as much as I can out of my school with the four years that I have. And I am truly gonna miss this school. I may not realize it now, but when the time comes, I know I'm gonna miss it a whole lot when I go off to college. And now I'm gonna jump into some thank-yous. I would first like to thank my family who's here with me today, a constant support system, always has my back, always gonna be there when I need them. I'd like to thank all the teachers that I've had in previous years, especially the ones who write about me. I'm truly honored to have people who like to write nice things about me and to honestly have me and put up with me in their class. And I would like to thank my counselor, Mr. Cole. He has truly helped me in many ways that not many people would, between adjusting schedule, college, setting me up for my future. It's been truly amazing to have him to be able to help me in all the things that I do when it comes to Addison Trail. And a special shout-out to my coach, Mr. Bazant. I could talk about him for so long and the amount of things that he's done with me, the amount of times he's been by my side between when I was freshman year all the way till now. He has been a constant support system for me and always been with me. And just to say, just to end it off, thank you guys so much again for giving me the opportunity to be up here and speak for all of you tonight. So thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start off with the same question. If you could share, you know, which teachers have the biggest influence upon you?
Like I mentioned before, I'm gonna pick between probably two. My coach, Coach Bazant, although I might not have had him as a teacher, he has been my coach for many years in luckily multiple different sports, baseball and football included, but he has always just had that motivation to help his players and students succeed in everything that he does, me definitely included.
At this point, I forgot to mention downstairs, I'm going to have both Maggie and you and your parents, if you want to come all the way up here. I have some things to present to you, and it's just too much for me to carry up there, so. Okay. Okay, so. Those puppies look so... So first, we start off, we have a certificate declaring you as 88's Best, so congratulations. Next, we have a gift certificate, so you can treat your favorite family to any ways. Okay? And then we have this moment that is just created for 88's Best. And so we have that for you, and here's the box, we'll give that to mom. Here's the box. And for you and for your mom. Congratulations to both of you and good luck. And then if you hang out for a little bit, we have one more presentation, and then we're going to take a short 10-minute break, so thank you.
Do you hear them say that both moms were kindergarten teachers?
Both moms were kindergarten teachers? That explains it all. You learned everything you needed to know in kindergarten.
Exactly.
Okay, so we have one more presentation. So Isabelle and Kragowski, did I get that close?
Yeah.
Okay. Izzy? We have... So District 88 has the District 88 Foundation, and we started last year having a pickleball tournament, so this year is our second pickleball tournament. And so we asked students to design a logo and a poster for us, and we got quite a few presentations. And Izzy, her logo and flyer was the one that we chose for this year. And as part of that, we also have a gift card for you, and her design will be used for both the event. And in case you all play pickleball, you are welcome to please sign up for the pickleball tournament, and we'd like to have as many people there as possible. So I will bring this out to you. It's a little bit easier for me to carry. Want to share anything about how you came up with this great idea, or no?
I have a little spiel.
The microphone is yours.
I've been practicing because I'm nervous, but I'd like to thank District 88 and the Board of Education for choosing my design. I've always loved making designs and stuff, so choosing or having this opportunity was great to use that love for something greater, so yeah.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your hard work, and we're looking, you know, we know that we're going to get all those people signed up for it just because. And also, all the businesses that support us and buy ads and provide sponsorships. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Charlie, can we display the logo?
No.
Do we have it?
Yep.
He doesn't have it. Oh, you know what? Did it?
Right there.
Oh, very nice. Nice.
Okay. So we're going to take a short 10-minute break. Please huff your stops and opportunity for the board to meet everybody, and you know, we need some more comfort.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Roll call please.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Roll call please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kane?
Here.
Quayre?
Here.
Finnegan?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Taylor?
Galvin?
Yeah.
Olson?
Here.
Okay, it is, at this time, it's item six on the agenda, petitions and hearings. It is the practice of Board of Education to provide a place on the agenda for and welcome comments and suggestions from the public. The school board will allocate an overall minimum of 30 minutes for public participation. During public participation, there will be a 20-minute minimum total length of time for one subject. And the time for any one person to address the board during public participation shall be limited to five minutes. Understand? We have a card or?
I believe the line would be for, I think, 15.
Okay, then. Well, 15 is for the items beforehand. So if you have something that you want to talk about, it would be at this time.
Hi, Jen Burns. So, okay, so I am a little confused because usually, most of the public meetings I've attended, usually at the beginning, the public comments are reserved for, like, agenda items. And I think that's what it says on the pin card, yeah? Are your comments agenda-related, yes, beginning of meeting? And then if it's no, then the public participation is at the end of the meeting. So that's why I'm not, you know, regardless, I guess that's just why I'm just a little confused. Because I don't have anything particularly on the agenda that I had wanted to address.
Okay.
I kind of wanted to listen to the entire presentation and see if there's anything else I needed to add, but, because, and also, I just want to, there's a lot of hats that I wear. Teacher Union President is one of them, but I'm not addressing the board as that. I'm still addressing the board right now as a community member.
That's fine. If you want to wait to the end, that's fine.
Well, okay, unless, I was getting the impression that I was supposed to do it now, and I'm just, I'm just a little confused and starting to get a little embarrassed.
That's okay. No, it's, it's just, yeah.
That's all. Again.
That's fine.
So I can wait. I don't mind. I'm just hanging out.
Okay.
Anyway, you've got somebody here, you know? I don't want you to feel like you're by yourselves. All right, thanks so much. I appreciate it.
No problem. Okay. Then we'll move along then to item seven, which is the motion to establish consent agenda. Board members may request to move a consent agenda item to the discussion or action portion of the agenda. We do have one note on the consent agenda. There was an amendment to the curriculum council meeting minutes. There's an attachment that was added to the minutes for the presentation at the meeting, so. Other than that, I would entertain a motion then to approve consent, or to establish, a motion to establish the consent agenda.
I move to establish the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Next, we have the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Then we'll move on to item nine, which is separate action items. First one is the treasuries report for November 2024.
Presenting to the board this evening for months ending November 30th, 2024, a balance of $93,946,991.81. This month's interest income was $507,624.50, bringing our year-to-date interest income to $1,893,595.95.
Okay. Return motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the treasuries report as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? CNN, roll call please.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item nine B, the budget status report for November 24.
Thank you. For the education fund, local revenues through November, the district has received 47.4%, or approximately $24.5 million of budget revenues, which is up slightly by 0.67% over the prior year. Other local revenues up 7.5% from this time from last year. CPPRT collections are relatively flat from last month. We've received about 43%. Investment income is strong and currently at over $1.186 million received thus far. A la carte food sales of just under quarter million year-to-date, or 57% of budget. And finally, the registration fees, textbook rental, parking fees budget are following the same trends as food sales year-over-year with about 79% of budget collected this far. For state aid collections, we are currently on target with approximately $2.5 million received, or 33.6%. And we've seen approximately 75% of the federal money come through, or approximately $2.54 million. For the expenses, salaries are on track in our flat year-over-year, down slightly, 13 basis points. Benefits are on similar track, slightly up 0.66% year-over-year. Contractual services are up slightly, 2.6%, and supplies are up year-over-year, 11.3%, while that is coming down, looking at last year's, or last month's trend. Capital outlay is up 27.1% at this time year-over-year, and tuition expense is currently trending down at 18.5% year-over-year. The operation and maintenance account, revenues at 47.4% or approximately $3.8 million year-to-date, slightly down year-over-year by 0.56%. Investment income is at 56% of budget already. The only state revenue expected in this fund is the $50,000 school maintenance grant, which we will expect to see in quarter two of 2025. And there is no budgeted federal revenue in the O&M accounts with no more ESSER funds. For the expenditures in the O&M fund, overall year-over-year activity is at 49% expended compared to 36.1% expended this time last year. Salaries are up about 1%, while benefits are relatively flat, down 0.06%. Utilities and purchase service expense is up 13.7% year-over-year, and supplies are up 15.5%. We are starting to see the electricity cost trends upward, and we are starting to see some increased pressures in the purchase service area for the O&M fund, as we have had some unexpected repairs needed this year, including some rotting and jetting of some pipes, replacement of the Willowbrook baseball infield, and most recently, some repairs to boiler two over at Willowbrook. Capital expenses are up 2.9% year-over-year. These projects include the female locker room placement over at Willowbrook, the roof recoating at Willowbrook, the boiler refurbishment at both buildings, and the 10-year health, life, safety, and long-range facility planning. We've closed a majority of these projects out with just the 10-year plan remaining outstanding. In the transportation fund, revenue of approximately $2.7 million, or 36.4% of budget, is down 7.6% compared to this time last year. Within other local revenues, investment income is currently at 130% of budget, so looking strong in that regard. State aid, no change. We've budgeted to see four categorical payments from the state and have only received one to date, so we are expecting that one, another payment here in the first quarter in 2025. Similar to the O&M fund, there is no federal revenue planned for this fund. For expenses, approximately $1.45 million are trending up at about 4.8% year-over-year. We've caught just about all of our vendors up to where these expenses are through October, so this is in the numbers report, so just about all of our vendors are caught up and paid through October. However, we are still struggling with one of our vendors, Aurora Napier, to get us our bills on time. As of right now, they are two months behind, and we are still continuing to monitor them and hassle them to get us their bills so we can get them paid and get caught up for a better benchmark of where this fund currently sits. And finally, the IMR pension fund, revenue of just over $1.16 million, or 51.4% of budget, up 6.7% year-over-year, and expenses of just under $785,000, or 35.3% of budget, is slightly up 1.1% over the prior year. So overall, we're still monitoring transportation outside placement costs as we have the past two years, and starting to work with Mr. Menka and the purchase service lines and supply lines in the O&M fund. Just trying to, you know, buildings are, you know, old and tired, and trying to make sure we keep them up and running as best as we can. Sometimes we just get unexpected costs that come with us and get us out of field, so doing our best to stay on track there and doing our best to kind of be proactive in those areas.
I move that the Board of Education approve the budget status report as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? CNN, roll call please.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the authorization to prepare tentative budget for 2025-26.
It is that time. Happy New Year. Yeah, we are, we are just about halfway through this current fiscal year, and we are now looking to start planning and setting the budget for 25-26. So attached is a resolution that is being presented to fulfill our annual requirement to officially establish the fiscal year and prepare the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025-26.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing preparation and publication of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? CNN, roll call please.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the review of the board policies for second reading.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following updated board policies: 2260, 2265, 480, 5100, 720, 7185.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? CNN, roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson? Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item E, policy update.
Actually, there's a second.
Yeah, there's one more motion, one more motion for, yeah, number two, under D.
Sorry. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following updated board policies: 2105, 2120, 430, 460, 4170, 510, 520, 590, 5120, 5125, 5230, 660, 6135, 6270, 710, 7100, 7160, 7180, 7200, and 810.
Second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Okay. Now, policy update for 130.
So tonight, we have one additional policy that was not reviewed in committee. This one is simply the restating of the district's vision and mission and strategic plan goals, and so that is, that's what's brought here tonight for the board's approval.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following updated board policy, 130.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we move on to item 10, discussion items for college and career readiness update.
Good evening. Charlie, can I have the screen? Give me one second, thank you. Bear with me while I connect. Tonight, I would just take, like, to take a few minutes to share the course offerings and just the work that's been done within the buildings with course selection for next year. So right when we start off the new year, right when we came back last, last week, our sophomores jumped right into course selection. And then we're going to follow with our juniors this week, freshmen, and then our eighth graders over the next couple of weeks. And this is the time where the counselors are pushing into the ATRs and the Warrior times and explaining School Links and talking about programming, and then having one-on-one meetings with the students to choose their courses for next year and also to discuss their four-year plans. So, you know, so we do have, School Links is our comprehensive platform in course selection. It houses our course listing guide. It also serves as career planning for our students, as well as post-secondary planning for work-based learning, as well as finding any colleges, requesting letters of recommendation from their teachers. It's just, it's, it's what we've moved to for our students for, like I said, for their four-year plan and for their plans for after they leave District 88. So just wanted to share, there's instructions for parents. They are welcome to join School Links and create their own accounts as well. So if you do go to School Links, it's actually www.schoollinks.com, and as a parent, you just go to, you can click on a Google account, or you can say you forgot your password as the parent, and it will let you log in and create your username and password moving forward. So this is just a great opportunity for parents to be able to discuss their course selections for next year, as well as any type of colleges or career pathways that the students are exploring during those resource periods that the counselors are pushing into. And then also, the course listing guide is, is up and ready to go. It's housed in School Links. Students can find it in School Links. And then you can also use this QR code, or there is a public-facing website that you can go to. And I encourage our community, our parents, our students, to really look at the course listing guide because it, it encapsulates pretty much everything educational about District 88. So if students are interested in career pathways, or they want to see what types of AP courses or dual credit or career certifications they can earn, it is all in this comprehensive listing guide through this link or this QR code. So like I said, our course offerings with, for next school year, we do have some new courses. At Edison Trail, it's Automotive Technology 7. Willowbrook is going to offer Culinary Arts 5. And then district-wide, we are going to be continuing with our cybersecurity pathway. We're going to be offering the next class, Cybersecurity 2. And then the PE department would like to begin a pathway in fitness and weight training. So they do have a capstone right now that is a dual credit, but they didn't have a way for students to get there. So they proposed an introduction to fitness and weight training to really focus the, on the freshmen and sophomores to see if they're interested in that. So we're excited to offer that as well. And then the final three courses are courses that we are partnering with Elmhurst University. That's where you see that CC at the end because it's collegiate credit, and it's, they are meant to be part of the teaching pathway, but it's also for students, if they don't know if they want to be teachers, these are just electives they can take to see what their interest is and just really see if that's something that they wanted to do. Excuse me. So as far as our advanced placement courses, again, this is all on School Links. We offer over 30 advanced placement courses across the district, and then dual credit courses as well. So I have received some questions about how the courses are labeled. So some courses are labeled DC, and some classes are labeled CC. And that's our internal trick, because the DC courses, like Accounting to Honors DC or AP Biology DC, that tells us that those are courses through COD. So students take these courses with our District 88 staff that are credentialed through COD or Elmhurst or any other of our partners. And they do come away with a transcripted credit where they can take to any other college and get credit for that course. And then, like I said, the transcripted courses, those are, those are labeled CC collegiate credit, just so we know that it's not a COD course. So we offer courses through Elmhurst University, Dominican University, and then also Project Lead the Way. Career certifications, I know this is a little bit hard to see. We have over 35 career certifications that we offer, and so I went ahead and I listed those certificates along with the courses that they're offered in, or where students can earn those certificates, so that they can refer to this and see if they, you know, if there's something that they're interested in, maybe they want to take that class and pursue those. and pursue those certificates or, like I said, qualifications for their careers. We also offer courses through the Technology Center of DuPage. These courses are open, they're vocational courses, open to juniors and seniors that spend half of their day at the Technology Center. And the courses are, they could be cosmetology, EMT, HVAC courses, fire science, there's just a comprehensive list, again, you can find it in School Links. But there, I'd just like to remind everyone, if your students are interested in it, there is an open house this Thursday at TCD from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. This is also a requirement. If students are interested in attending TCD, that they require this as well. So if they, if they are unable to attend this open house, there will be opportunities in the spring for students to attend, too. We just really want them to know and, and see what the, the TCD is like before they actually jump in and, and register for it. Also, like I mentioned, through School Links, and Ms. Navarez has created a career pathways website. The career pathways are found in School Links. We have 18 of them that we offer throughout the district, and they are color-coded by the career clusters. So students can go to School Links, or they can scan that QR code, and if they're interested in any of them, if they click on it, it says, there's, there's just a whole bunch of information on that pathway. Is this for me? Right? So just some, you know, personality characteristics, or, you know, if you're interested in these things, this, this career may be good for you. Which counselors can help you find, you know, go through that pathway? And then there's also suggested sequence of courses to take. As well as in School Links, there's a list of extracurriculars that support that career pathway. So it's just been a, you know, very nice, comprehensive package for our students to see and to really explore what their likes are. Finally, with being, you know, a comprehensive district, with offering comprehensive coursework, we do have extensive fine arts and world languages offerings. So, you know, they're all listed here for you. Again, all the course descriptions are found in School Links. We also offer the Seal of Biliteracy to our students. So students who show proficiency in both English and reading, writing, and listening and speaking in another language, we test them, and if they show proficiency, they get the Seal of Biliteracy on their diploma. And that results in dual credit, and it results in students, I haven't met a student who got the seal that had to take a world language at college. So it waives that requirement as well. So last year, we had 190 students to earn the seal. And then we do have two dates coming up at Willowbrook and February 19th at Addison Also, for our students, we do offer academic supports from period zero through nine. So we understand that students have, you know, activities or things to do after school. So we have opened our supports before school as well. So at Addison Trail is the ARC, or ASK, I'm sorry, the Academic Success Center. Willowbrook has the Warrior Resource Center, they call it the Work. We also offer the resource periods at both schools. There is a writing center where students can go get help with their writing. And we also have before and after-school tutoring in those resource centers. So if students need any other support, they could see their counselor or pretty much any teacher, and they can help them get any support they need. And then our graduation requirements, we, these are also found on School Links. And we, we added something this year where we have, our District 88 graduation requirements are in the first column, and our, I'd like to point out that the requirements in District 88 are the same or higher as area districts around us, and they also exceed that the requirements that ISB puts forth. But we have one column that are the, the main District 88 graduation requirements, and now we're also suggesting requirements or suggested coursework for students that are college-bound. So, you know, it's just a little bit, you know, if, if they're deciding to go on to college next year, these are just suggested courses, they'll probably help them in the long run when they, when they leave us. And then the final column are the ISB graduation requirements. We also offer graduation flexibilities because we want our students to be able to experience as much as they can through, through the coursework and through the support that we could provide them while they're with us. So we offer graduation flexibility in science. So after students take the two years of science that are required by the state, they can substitute, substitute their third year of science with any career capstone. So if it's a culinary pathway that they're pursuing, or education teacher prep, autos, Project Lead the Way, or any TCD, they're able to substitute that science with, with those classes. We also offer, if a student goes, wants to complete an apprenticeship or technical education pathway, they can also waive some of their graduation requirements, or, I'm sorry, substitute them. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to misspeak. And then finally, physical education as well. So if we have students that need to take a course that is, that they need in 12th grade to be able to enroll into a post-secondary school, also anything that's required for graduation, if, if they need a graduation requirement, finally, our marching band students can also, we have that waiver as well as the PE waiver, or the athletic waiver for PE. So it's just more ways to get students to find that academic success, and then to also have the experiences that they need for their next steps. We do have, we invite our, you know, incoming eighth graders to Course Information Night and Curriculum Showcase at both buildings this week. Addison Trail starts off at 5:30 with an athletic and activity fair, and then Mr. Andrews is going to be speaking with the parents in the main gym at 6:30. Over at Willowbrook, we have meet the coaches at 5:45 in the Field House, and then 6:30 parent meeting with Dr. Kraus in the auditorium. And then finally, our ACT prep course, we are offering a prep course for our juniors this year. Registration is ongoing right now. The fee is $140, and it lasts for eight weeks. It'll kick off with a pre-test, and then students will have support and have, get some testing strategies in the math, the English, and the science, and then it will end up with a post-test and review of that before we take the test in April. So thank you for your time. Once again, I just encourage everyone to really look at School Links and reach out with any questions. So thank you.
Okay. Then move along, then information discussion items, or with no discussion of the Freedom Information Request and Credit Card Summary. And then we're going to the school recognition, we'll start with the Addison Trail this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. As we kick off second semester, we just wrapped up first semester grades today, actually. So we'll start reviewing those, looking at everything from freshman on track halfway through the, the school year here, to graduation expectancy, all those things. But this past weekend, we did have an opportunity to partner with State Rep Norma Hernandez and US Congresswoman Nalia Ramirez to host a FAFSA workshop and FAFSA completion support. Pretty incredible event where some of our families were able to receive one-on-one support in order to complete that FAFSA document, as we do know that is a graduation requirement. So not only does it satisfy that, but a lot of really, you know, personal conversations that were happening indoors, literally watching being opened for some of our families is pretty powerful to see. So appreciate the partnership there. As, you know, kind of Ryan alluded to, in the, the finance world, we're already talking about next year, and we're talking about it with all of our eighth-grade transition events as well. So last week, we presented to the families at Indian Trail on January 8th, and then tomorrow, we're stealing Willowbrook's format of hosting a step-up day. Typically, if you remember in the past, we have done this in the form of like a pay-it-forward event. This year, we're having all 400 some odd students from Indian Trail. It's going to help us reach every single student that is at Indian Trail, as well as St. Phillips, as well as three homeschool families. So pretty much the entire class of 2029 that we're aware of right now are going to be at Addison Trail tomorrow morning from about 9:00 AM to 11:40. Similar, again, format, kind of working with the Willowbrook team on what they do. But we're hosting, our counseling department will be hosting kind of that, that how-to part of course selection, as well as our athletic department and extracurricular activities, promoting those, and then receiving their kind of first tour of the building. So really excited to welcome the class of 2029 on campus during the school day. And then, as Ms. Gallis talked about, on January 16th is our Course Information Night. Incredible opportunity, just want to continue to encourage families to, to come out to that. Also, tomorrow night, we have our Protestantino Sanación parent meeting. The following day, on Wednesday evening, is our Addison Trail Parent Organization, and then at 7 o'clock is our Citizens Advisory Council. On Monday, we will have no school, it's the Observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so please take the day off. World Language Week is coming up, so January 27th through the 31st, we'll be hosting a World Language Week. So Ms. Robles and her team in the World Language Department will be putting on presentations, information sessions, as well as some like scavenger hunt kind of fun activities for all students to partake in. In the athletics world, boys wrestling held its senior night. If you haven't seen this, it is on social media, too. We hosted actually in our auditorium on the stage. Pretty incredible event that Mr. Ayala, when he first came over, he said, can we host wrestling in the auditorium? And I had no idea what he meant by it. And then he worked with this coach. It's a really cool event. And the headlock wrestling organization that actually rents our facility and has a lot of our students coming in, the whole entire organization attended that senior night. So a really kind of special event for all of them to, they started in that organization, and now they're, they wrestle as seniors in front of them. Our girls gymnastics also held their senior night this past week. Special shout-out to boys basketball, Luke Smith passed 2,000 career points, and he's still going. We're about nearing towards the end of the season, but 2,000 career points, so he will actually be recognized tomorrow night before the game versus Fenton. So pretty incredible accomplishment. That's a name that we've heard before here, all-state athlete, just an incredible kid, but looking forward to him kind of wrapping up his season. Girls basketball did win their last two conference games versus Morton and Willowbrook. Crosstown basketball is this Friday night, Addison Trail versus Willowbrook on this, January 17th at 7:30. A date to save is Pack the Place. Pack the Place will actually be held on a Saturday this year, and the varsity, girls varsity game versus Elk Grove kicks off at 3:00 PM, and then boys varsity versus Plainfield East will kickoff at, I say kickoff, tip-off at 4:30 PM. There's no kicking in basketball, so. And that's it for Addison Trail. Thank you.
And now Willowbrook.
Thanks so much. As was mentioned a few times, Thursday is Curriculum Showcase. We're excited to welcome predominantly the class of 2029, although we do invite all of our families to, to come and see and meet with some of our staff, our staff who are present. It's an exciting event to have our academic departments represented, but also our parent organizations, and, and a variety of other ways that students can learn a little bit more about Willowbrook High School. 5:45, we'll start in the Field House with meet the coaches, and then a quick welcome message predominantly given by students in the auditorium, and then the Curriculum Showcase from about 7 to 8. This is where the CT department is printing T-shirts for the class of 2029. Brook Catering is, you know, showcasing all their skills. So if you stop on by, there's plenty of, plenty of great things happening that day. Our counseling department is continuing their transition into the second semester with our students, but also transitioning into next school year already as we're beginning course selections this week, starting with our current sophomores and getting them deciding as they make certain selections for courses next year. But they also, you know, are working closely with our graduating seniors to complete the FAFSA, which is a graduation requirement in the state of Illinois, so making sure that our families have all the supports necessary. And I know that the event hosted at Addison Trail was another great example of that, to be able to support our students and families as they go through that. As you heard from Maggie, about Maggie and the speech team, they had a fifth-place finish this weekend at Wabasi Valley. She was a two-time tournament champion. What started as a great recognition for athletics is also transitioning into activities. But our Student Athletes of the Month, we're doing Student Activities, Participant of the Month as well. We have two Student Athletes of the Month, Isabella Barajas for girls wrestling, and a shout-out to the girls wrestling team. This was the first-ever senior night in the history of girls wrestling at Willowbrook High School. So they had that this evening. They defeated St. Lawrence on, St. Lawrence on senior night. So shout-out to Isabella and her teammates. And then Otis Powell, who is a junior with us in the boys basketball. As Mr. Andrews mentioned, we do have the Crosstown game on Friday. I'm not looking forward to seeing Lucas light it up like he always does against just about every team, but I'm thinking Otis will maybe be playing while, you know, guarding him as well. So we'll have a great time. Shout-out to our Special Olympics basketball team. They continue to just have a tremendous season of fun and, and excitement, and they had a great game last week against Morton. Our girls bowling and boys bowling team, both were victorious last week. We had a, girls bowling defeated Hinsdale Central, and then boys bowling, which was their senior night, defeated Addison Trail. So great, great time for them. Girls gymnastics continues their winning ways as well with a victory over Morton. Boys swimming continues their tremendous season, as well as boys wrestling. As I mentioned about the girls wrestling team, Daisy Trujillo, another wrestler for, girls wrestler for us, was our first-ever tournament champion in the history of Willowbrook High School as a girls wrestler. So tremendous work on their part. Our cheerleaders and dance are getting ready for their conference competitions for both JV and the varsity teams coming up here in the next week. And then, looking forward, the winter play is going to be February 6th to the 8th. So that's a, a production that is always entertaining. This one, I think, is a murder mystery if I'm not mistaken. So it's a fun one to, fun and/or a little bit serious. They, the winter play, I think they always pick a serious one, you know? The musical's the fun one, the competition one is, you know, you know, for competition purposes. I feel like the winter play is always a little bit more serious of a production. But that's just a quick update from Willowbrook High School.
Any board member reports? Quick question with the Course Information Night on Thursday. Just wanted to see if board members are available to be at one of the schools and which school you want to go to if you're available.
I can do either, but you want to do Willowbrook again this year?
Yeah, why don't you do Willowbrook?
I can do.
Willowbrook?
I'll go to Addison.
Addison Trail? Okay.
Addison.
Addison? Okay. Sounds good. Okay. And then superintendent's report.
Yeah.
Okay. Then public comments.
So I guess the, do you guys actually, what do you guys?
It goes to the secretary. The secretary, yeah.
Because maybe that's also part of the usual problems, or just trying to, number practice. When Danny Brink is here, she's on top of everything, and she usually brings that to me.
It's okay. Well, and I think I've, I filled it out in the, in the past, but like, you know, no one like collectively like here, you know what I mean? And so I just kind of like still have it in my stuff, and, well, we'll figure it all out. It all comes together. So Jen Burns, a community member, you know, parent of three grads, you know, Willowbrook alum myself, who never thought they would ever step back in Willowbrook High School once they graduated, and here, and just look at me now. I just wanted to let you know, the Villa Park Recreation Center had their ribbon cutting today, so it's very exciting that Villa Park has a new facility to provide our community and just overall enhance the, the type of citizens that we have, that we're nurturing and growing and things like that. So I'm very excited about that. Doesn't have a pool, but someday, we're, we're going to find, find a way to keep building some more indoor pools here in DuPage County for our D88 kids. The graduation requirements, I am still not, haven't really come to terms with the rationale. I still don't feel it was done in the most transparent way. And again, please remember, I, I am talking to as a community member, a parent, you know, an alum who, for decades, decades, decade, decades, we held true our public speaking course, where you really just could kind of concentrate on trying to stand in front of a group of people and be able to kind of suppress some of that nervousness and anxiety and things like that, and still be able to have a conversation. And what was really cool is someone who helped to have our Willowbrook and Addison Trail students get their first jobs as lifeguards, because as sophomores, usually as sophomores, they kind of took it, and so, you know, 15, 16 years old, they're starting to get their license, you know, some of those types of things. So, you know, having them become a little bit more comfortable in their own skin and being able to talk to someone that they don't know very well, especially face-to-face, really did help them with that interview process and things like that. So I'm not there yet. You know, the, the decision was had. Again, when I run into people in the community, they still aren't quite sure how eliminating public speaking and economics is not helping us to create good citizens. They just kind of feel it's like one of those general education things. They're- They just kind of feel it's like one of those general education things. The people in the community I've talked to, they're just not on board with that being eliminated from or in lieu of yet. There's a podcast called Sold a Story. So those of you who might be interested in reading, there's this whole lawsuit that's going on right now. I don't really remember my, how I was taught to read as an elementary school student, but I think for some of you, if you've ever had any struggling readers, I found a very informative podcast. And I really think that maybe some of our mysteries behind reading will definitely be solved in the future and we're going to be able to start seeing some stronger work. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that I think maybe part of where I struggle is that I know that courses that are considered graduation requirements, as a parent, again, I'm speaking to you right now as a parent, in my experience, I'm not trying to talk about anyone else's experience, this is my experience, that some of those courses that were graduation requirements, I knew that when my kids were signing up to take them, they would probably be able to take them in the year, you know, that I registered for. It was, I don't think this ever happened to any of my kids, where they signed up to take a graduation requirement course as a sophomore and basically were told, eh, there wasn't enough room or whatever, you have to pick something else. And they had to wait till their junior year. Like, that's not something that happened. But something that did happen to us that would always be very frustrating is we would try to sign up for electives, for things for them to try and to consider in their passions or maybe what they want to do. And sometimes those courses didn't run. I don't really know the reason why. The parents are never told the reason why. We're just, the kids are just kind of called into the guidance counselor and just said, you gotta pick something else. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is my, as a parent's experience, you know, by the time then my kids got called in for that, sometimes self, there really wasn't anything left as far as options and things. And so it was very, very frustrating when I wanted my students, my kids, my personal biological children, when I wanted them to be able to take some kind of course and their only alternative was to maybe take a study hall or to take something they really didn't want to do. And so I'm hoping that maybe now that we're trying to provide more choice and opportunities for students and not, you know, opening up some of the requirements for some more flexibility, then I'm just hoping that maybe then there's an opportunity, if we are doing that, that when the kids sign up for courses, that we can kind of find a way to maybe not just eliminate things, but maybe kind of do it in a little bit more guided fashion. So that way, maybe if their first choice isn't something that is able to run, because again, I'm not trying to advocate as a community member, you know, run a course for two kids that are interested in something. That's not what I'm asking for. I just really would like to make sure that our kids can truly sign up for some academic courses and really learn something unique and different and not have to take a study hall unless that's something that they really feel that they need to do during their day. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next, moving to announcements, next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, February 3rd, 2026, or 2025. Put it off for a whole year. At 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. And the following Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. At this time, I entertain a motion moving to close session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint, lodge against an employee, specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity, however meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase. A Transparency Act may not be closed and should be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the Act 5 Illinois Compiles Statutes 120 S2C1 and be collective negotiating matters between the public body and employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Okay. Roca?
Oyer.
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
I move the Board of Education approve the recommendation for termination of employee number 01132025A based on violation of Board of Education policy 5120.
Second.
Okay. Um, discussion, see no call?
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stop.
Yes.
Taylor? Galvin?
Yeah.
Olson? Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes, motion approved. Um entertain a motion on item B.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation for termination of employee number 01132025B.
We'll call.
Stop.
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Under the action on item C, we're starting to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Long-term delay?
Aye.
Okay, say aye, ayes have it, and then we can adjourn.